Okay, welcome to the Wayland School Committee meeting. We're starting at 6:04. We are being recorded by Wake Camp, please keep in mind. So we'll start out with welcoming, call to order, public comments, and then we'll move along in our agenda. We have all of the school committee members here, and then we have our school administrators here as well. In terms of welcoming remarks, does anybody, any school committee members have anything that they'd like to contribute? No?
I know.
Okay. I know, right? Honestly. Okay, so then we'll move on to public comment. I don't have any via email. Is anyone here for public comment? Okay. No one's here for public comment. Okay, so I won't even say the rest of that. We'll move right into the superintendent update. Dr. Easy, you want to start with that?
Yep, thank you. First board of business is that we call high school principal to come up and present two things for us. First, you're going to do a field trip and talk a little bit about this music festival and introduce our guest of the evening, Dr. Shanley. After you finish the first item, you can call her up.
Perfect, yeah, I'll do the first thing first. Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone.
Hello, thanks for joining us.
Absolutely, thanks for having me. So this first item is a really, is a fun one. We are, once again, really excited to have two students from our high school, Adrian Yemen, who plays a mean viola, and Kevin Lee, who is in our chorus, have been selected to attend the National Association for Music Education All Eastern Festival, which this year is being held in Rochester, New York. So this request is on behalf of Susan Memeley, who will be accompanying the students to Rochester for three or four days in April. As a festival, it's basically a conglomeration of really selective musicians from across the region, who again have been selected to participate. They will be participating in their respective honors ensembles. They will be rehearsing for a final performance that will be held on April 16th. And I'll note with some pride that only 65 students from the state of Massachusetts were selected from 600 high schools in the state to participate. And so both Adrian and Kevin will be in very esteemed company indeed for this experience. Susan, again, will be accompanying them and also with these selected students from Weston High School as well, traveling together. So I'll put that to the school committee for approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just think it's so amazing. Every time I see all these musicians make all these festivals and districts and everything, you know, it's, it's great. We have great progress.
We do. It's really incredible. I think this is, I mean, it's one example of many of sort of just the degree of skill that our students have in this regard. Yeah.
Okay, so you need a motion to approve?
Yes.
All right, so I move to approve the, the trip to the All Eastern Festival in New York as presented by Ms. Mizuguchi.
Doctor Mizuguchi.
Doctor Mizuguchi, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all is in favor? Aye. All opposed? No one's opposed, everyone's in favor, so a motion passes.
Terrific. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
All right, and our second item, we're calling Dr. Shanley to come up in this to give us a State of the Union on the math department.
I called it too.
Right. So, Alicia, you can.
Sure, yeah, I'll jump in. So we were delighted to have Dr. Heller here this evening. She was unable to join us when we sort of did the large introductions from all of the buildings of our new staff. Shanley has jumped in headfirst with a whole lot of experience and perspective when it comes to mathematics and math education. And we wanted to carve out a little time for you to become acquainted with her and for her to share some of her insights thus far and the work that they're doing in the math department. So I'll turn over to you.
Thank you. So, nice to meet you all. Nice to meet you. I was told to give a little background. So ironically, I'm from the Rochester area in New York. So I was so pleased to tell, because when Adrian said he's going there. So, you know, real quick thing, I'm a product of public schools. I have my bachelor's in math from Marist, and then I've always been in education. I'm kind of an education geek. So master's in math education, doctorate in math education and science, actually. And started teaching in Gibson, New York. And then when we moved to Massachusetts, I've taught here in Millis and Oxbridge and mostly in Medway, mostly in leadership positions. But I just found my way here this summer, kind of unexpectedly in my world. And I, I'm really pleased I made this decision. You know, people would be like, "Yeah, that's big." You know, I'm kind of on the old side. And, but I've just, I've been so happy to be here. I have never worked with a department that has such depth. I can't believe it. You know, I've done so many schedules where we're like, "Okay, this one can teach this, this one can teach this." And when we have these conversations, people bring so much to the table. They, they put me in shame with their formative assessment. They're like, "We got to get everything back," and then we're returning, and then we have all this time to give feedback to the kids. Everything's so systematic and so positive about helping kids. Room, I'm familiar with the setup. But to me, I've never worked in like a beehive like this, right? So we're all together, and the kids are in and out all the time. People are helping other people's kids. They can come in anytime to make up tasks. It's really amazing how well everybody works together to help the kids. Just, just so many little things that are just so, such a nice change for me. Although I, I don't want it just my other people. I have enjoyed wherever I've worked. And so that's, that's kind of, you know, the, the fun for me. We started the year, sort of selfishly, we did a little deep dive into our three core courses, geometry, algebra II, and pre-calculus. When we started to look at our topics and sequences, conversations like, "We're still dealing with some COVID concerns," but you know, we had to, just like every district, move things around as kids came out of COVID and support things. So we feel like we're going in the right direction. Took a deep dive, and again, it's just so nice. We looked at all the skills as a whole department and discussed what was important and what might come later and really, really rich conversations. With the goal that in the end, I'll take those topic sequence, course in spoken sequences, and turn them into maps. But along the way, I learned so much, right? I learned that our introductory level courses are all college-bound. Everything, every student in this building is prepared for college math when they leave. Juniors that are taking intro to pre calc, you know, senior year, they're ready to take calculus. They choose to do that, but they have some options. Which is, options are really good. One of the things that I love was, we've been doing this, I love going into the, to observe, and I'm so impressed with our computer science courses here. The kids that are doing the projects, this, you know, talk about what the students are making. Some of them are in my advisory, so they're always working on their projects when we're in advisory. Just, just really nice in the support that they have for that. So from one looking at all of those, you know, we looked at all those maps and we kind of went along and we took it off-table. And then we start to talk about different ways to instruct. And we've started to investigate kind of a different, it's kind of like a paradigm shift, to use an old word, where you start to think about having students explore whatever concept they're going to learn before you tell them how to do it. So there's a little exploration, they can use what they know. And the context is something they bring their life experiences to. So for example, I was doing one the other day, I don't know how much, exponential growth. And so it's like, what makes a good tennis ball? There's actually mathematics around whether a tennis ball is good or not. There's, you know, the Tennis Ball Association has 55% bounce to the previous bounce. So then we start building off of that, and then we build in very formalized math, and we get to very high-level math. But just having those different conversations was exciting. Everybody's kind of excited to look at things in a little bit different way. And we're going to continue to take a deeper dive at that, some professional development we're doing this year. And the other things we're working on are around what the high school is working on, which is making sure that our, you're always better at things than I am, but how our, how, what our core values are, that we're living that, that we're really, really doing what we say we are going to do. So all of that has been a fun start to the year, and I'm excited to be here and probably see me again sometimes.
What classes are you teaching?
So I teach, so this is actually kind of a funny story, right? So, so I'll answer the question. I teach two sections of college geometry and one intro to pre calc. But when I was in the interview, one of the teachers said, "So what's the one course you love to teach?" Or this is me even after. And I'm like, "I just like teaching students." I've taught like all different courses. I have some things I like, some things I don't. I said, "But the one thing I really don't like teaching is geometry." And it's true, I also have integrated math. But, yeah, so I'm teaching geometry, and I am coming to love it now. I'm so lucky, and I, I'm so glad you asked that, because I really wanted to highlight the work that Hannah Martin does with that math team, you know, last year, number one in the state in New England. That, that's really great. And Sko Blazey's the other geometry teacher. So I'm really lucky because the different, and this is true for a lot of people in the department, but everybody brings something different to the table. And as we discuss the geometry, I must admit, I'm starting to like geometry, so.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Heller?
Nobody. Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Sorry for the verbose one. It's really nice to hear your, what you found in the pod or whatever you want to call it, of the kids going in and out and getting lots of help. And that, that just kind of warms my heart that that's happened.
Yeah, it's really neat, actually. You hear however, you get to hear a lot about how teacher, people approach different topics and everything. So it actually brings for all the teachers as well, a lot of opportunities. So it's just, I've never had this situation, but, and in the beginning, it was a little overwhelming, I won't lie. But, yeah, now I don't, I wouldn't change it.
Great, well, it's great to meet you. Thanks for taking the time to be here. Appreciate it. Welcome to Wayland.
Thank you.
Mosley, but.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Item number three, point three is the discussion approval of our five-year classroom audiovisual lease. And Simon would come up in case we have questions regarding this. This is also in your job box. So, Leisha, perhaps you can just kind of walk us through where we are and what the future looks like for us, and then the school committee could ask questions.
Sure, this is our standard request to approve a lease for audiovisual equipment. Just to remind you, update you on the process. We go out to bid for the hardware and get multiple quotes, choose the lowest quote. And then we take that quote and we go out to bid for the hardware, for the lease. And then we choose the lowest lease bid and then pass on the hardware purchase to the leasing company. And the leasing company actually buys the hardware. So that's the process. So what I'm asking for tonight is this year's lease approval for the AV purchase for this year.
And this is in our FY '23 budget?
This is in our budget, yeah.
Does anyone have any questions, or did everybody?
Very nice formatting this time, Leisha. The memo. Right, should I make a motion?
Yeah, if there's no questions, make a motion.
All right, I move that we approve the five-year AV equipment lease as presented.
Second? All is in favor? Aye. All opposed? No one's opposed, everyone's in favor, motion passes, great.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Thanks, Leisha. Appreciate it. Okay, so we can move on to financial matters. Fiscal year '24 budget, including full-day kindergarten and elementary?
Right, so maybe kindergarten?
So are we looking at?
So what I'm going to do is just put up what we presented for kindergarten. So we just kind of work from this, and then we can get into the book and questions and so on. So as we talked about, for full day, for, like, for full day in kindergarten right now, in the budget, we are covering .65 of 1.0 FTE and families are paying for .35 of that number. And this is kind of how the revenues break out throughout the preschool. And obviously, as a, as a, the total number of what we are taking in for revenue is a 4, 5, 7, 7, 7, 2.
Can you go back to, to the first slide for a second? So it's on .65 for nine separate FTEs?
Yes.
Is that what it represents yet? Okay, thank you.
Nine teachers and nine teaching assistants.
Okay, so for 18 FTEs.
Yes.
Okay, nevermind, I don't have a question.
So just to clarify, what's in your book? Is the initial part of the budget that included pulling full daycare and at 100%? So that's still the official thing that we've sent over to the town, even though they've kind of pulled it out. So the elementary numbers here are a little bit different than what will happen if this gets pulled out of, out of the budget.
But they have pulled it out, but you guys haven't pulled it out yet because.
Right, but the, I'm sorry, I'm being, but the previous slide, it wasn't .65, it's .35.
That's the revenue, the revenue.
Right.
Yes. Because .65 is in the budget.
But that's what we're talking about, adding into the, yeah, not 65, 35.
Right.
Yeah.
So what was in the revolving fund is actually the total of seven FTE, so it's .35 times.
Right. So, okay.
And the way it breaks out, obviously, it's, no benefits will be included because it's already been covered in the budget at the .65 already.
Right.
Because each teacher is carrying our benefit after you get to a .5.
Oh, when the town pulled it out, did they pull it out at the same numbers that we put it in? Or are they disagreeing with our number? Okay.
So really, basically, to simplify it, the only thing we're really adding is the equivalent of the tuition.
Correct.
So if we brought it in, the special revenue fund would go away?
Correct.
And we're just assuming the operating cost will be the same?
They're here already, so we're not adding the staff per se. We're just bringing in the partial charging to the tuition fund.
Do the, um, so all the costs of the special revenue fund would come over? All the expenses in there? Because there's more than just the teachers and the teaching assistants, right? In the special revenue fund? If I'm reading this correctly?
So Tom, the, the amount by which the town has asked us to cut the budget 700 and something, right? Includes this 400 and whatever it is.
Well, it includes whatever you want to include.
Right, but, but in their minds, when they came up with that number, was, what were they thinking that would be?
I don't know that they actually looked at any line items. They just, it was a bottom line.
This goes with the number, and for us, the first point would be to take this number out because I don't see where else we'd cut 400, $7,000 from service. So this really, so they didn't say take full daycare out. They said reduce by 731 dollars.
That was my question, because you said they pulled it out, but not.
Well, they reduced the total, the bottom line, that's it.
Right.
But not, the 700 isn't on top of the 400?
No.
Right. Do we know why they picked the 700? I don't remember the exact number.
731,000.
It's because they had, because they, because they had to reduce overall the town budget, so it didn't, so it stayed within the levy.
Okay, so they backed into it from.
And I think they were clear that, with their understanding that it was your decision what made up that 700,000. Want to answer a question about anything else in there? No, there's nothing else in there, because I have the, what's happened historically here is about this time of the year, we've looked at where we are budget-wise with the revolving fund. We had extra funds, we allocated a small amount to each classroom for supplies separately. So I have the school-based admin assistants reaching out to me now to try to establish that number.
Are you answering my question about what else is in the revenue fund? Is that what you mean?
Yes, there's nothing else budgeted.
Oh, you're right, there are a lot of zeros there. Okay, I'm looking around here. Yeah, just the teachers and the teaching assistants. Yep, I see. Okay, I see what you're saying.
Sometimes, sometimes we end up with a small surplus because the staff swap in and out, staff leave, they retire. We bring in a lower cost person, so it'll be a few extra dollars there.
Right.
So through conversations with the town, they've already sort of said it wasn't tenable to include all of it in this budget?
No, I, I don't think that's a.
They just lowered the total.
They, the town hasn't specifically said full-day kindergarten. That's Dr. Easy and Tom saying that to take 700,000 out.
Oh, I see.
This is like an obvious question, right?
Yeah, it's a big number, though.
Because it's a big number.
Right. So the book, in your book as was presented, full daycare is in our budget. Where the conversations are starting to happen, and the number that we were asked to reduce our budget by 731, in our conversations, at first, are the most logical place to go from our standpoint with the dare.
Right.
But obviously, you and the committee can decide where that movement happens from.
Do we, do we look at the bus question that we talked about? Not last time, but the time before?
We checked, and there is no midday parents.
Okay, so it doesn't change anything?
No, if parents wanted midday bus pickup, what would happen? No, I'm being honest. Like, what if next year, like, somebody calls and says, "I want a midday bus pickup."
I don't think we're required to, I think we're only required to bus one to six, right? It's the one that.
I don't, actually, I don't know. I don't know if they require half-day pickup.
But are, is it bad employment?
With kindergarten is full day, right? Then I think we only have to.
Eliminate all of that.
Then it's not even a question. But if it's half-day, then are we required to bus students?
I don't think so. It's only handful anyway, so we couldn't even fill a bus.
Yeah. So, okay.
They're 19, right? That's what I read on the enrollment sheet. I think on the enrollment sheet, they're 19, probably spread out across the school. Okay, is there more we should know about kindergarten?
No, it's, it's all, that's it. All right, so the next thing would be the elementary school, schools ask. And in long conversations, we're trying to debate whether or not the principals needed to be here to present the improvement need that they're requesting. But we decided that, given that we are more likely not going to get any of our asks, then we didn't need to have them come and present it. But we could go through the ask from the sheet that we have in front of us. So the improvement that they're looking for right now, the .4 library teacher, .4 technology teacher, and two building subs to be spread across all preschools. Locur was looking for a math interventionist and a teaching assistant for Spanish immersion program, which is from grade two to five. .5 reading specialist to break up the one reading specialist there that's going across six grade levels.
What do they have at other, I know we're not, we might not be able to do these things, but at the other elementary schools for reading specialists? And we'll just say reading specialists.
Yeah, so the FTE varies per school. Clayford carries a little more, one, maybe one more FTE given the number of students there. And Happy Hollow also carries more because they have more sections there because obviously with Spanish immersion, all the teachers that are in the face of those kids are bilingual and the research doesn't need to get involved in that. And Happy Hollow asks is the .5 for the EL teacher and the 1.0 math interventionist. The EL teacher is in our level service ask, enrollment driver, so that wouldn't be a programmatic need at this point. And Clayford, the two asks for that building would be the reading specialist at a .2. And that would cover the reading specialists currently in the language base. So it serves two purposes for us. It would give us the .2 extra staff in the LBC and cover the, and add to the .8 of the current reading specialists in that building to make that person a 1.0. So it covers kindergarten. And EL, .5 ask for Clayford.
And those are both in the level service?
Yes.
So the first slide is not in that level service, though? Not, the one that's not school-specific?
This one?
Yeah.
No, it's not in.
What's the, what's the actual monetary price tag on the building substitutes? Because I've heard, I've heard.
The need.
Yeah, the need.
So it's tricky, because I think for us, we would rather have a building sub in the building as opposed to calling a sub each day. Those folks don't have to be certified by a teacher. Obviously, it's a cheaper price tag, but it's a little more expensive than paying for a teaching assistant. But look, we have the actual price tag for each of those.
I think it's like 30, something thousand dollars?
So how many do we have now of building substitutes? Do we have any?
Each building has at least a 2.0.
Okay.
Except for the high school.
Except for the high school. High school doesn't do subs. So each elementary school has at least two already.
So this would be just floaters? This, these, this 2.0 would be floaters to just add another two-thirds FTE to?
To each, right.
And did, do the building substitutes also cover circumstances where the teachers are there for the day, but they have something they have to do that takes up class? Is that what they, what they do? Yeah.
They're on-call as needed.
Can I ask an elementary question that's not related to this?
Yeah.
So, Tom answered this one a little bit for me, but I just want to ask it. So in the number of sections that the budget's built on, that's in the back of the book or somewhere, the enrollment driven, it seemed like the sections were a little uneven. And so I wondered what the plan is for that. So, for instance, I went to, yeah, well, classes. Like, you know, there are five sections of, what, fifth graders at Clayford or something, but there are not enough kids to support that. So what's the plan to? I always thought the budget was built on seeing what, what, what you thought the true sections might be. But it seemed like there were a few in a couple of the schools that were really either over or under. So I didn't know what the plan was.
So, right now, at Clayford, we have five sections of fifth grade.
Yes.
So that's kind of the number that we'll be talking about for the middle school, getting the extra sections going to the middle school. Because currently, we have about 206 students in sixth grade and we have 249 students in fifth grade. And that would be the increase for the sixth-grade classes. Right now, Claypit has five sections of fifth grade. They will go to three sections next year. However, we have three of the biggest fourth-grade classes that we've had a long time, at about 26, 26, and 26. We are constantly getting increased enrollment from the new development down the street here. So we are really keeping our eyes on this a little bit to see if by the summer enrollment changes. But either way, the most we'll probably have is, say, four fifth-grade classrooms. So we have a teacher, a tenure teacher from a fifth-grade class that will now either swing to cover a retirement that's happening at Happy Hollow. So it would mean you need for us to kind of hire new personnel. And we have to maintain that teacher per se because third grade currently at Claypit is carrying five sections. So though we have three next year, in a year, two years, we now go back to five.
Right. So... All right, so you're saying, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't follow that. But you're saying next year, there's going to be four fifth-grade classrooms, even though this chart says five?
Right, because the number is smaller.
Okay, then you thought...
And you're going to use that extra teacher to cover where you needed them elsewhere?
Right. And we, so we have a retirement for, let's say, a third-grade teacher at Happy Hollow. So then we make the shuffle, as we do every year. And then there's also a shuffle with the Spanish immersion that goes, go up now to fifth grade. That will, that will complete the whole continuum for Spanish immersion as well.
So, so what about the numbers that are under FY '24 projected average class size? You have a projected class size of 31, which seems way off.
But I think that's what you're saying, right? Is, yeah, yeah, is that you're going to move, so you have the projected class size for grade three at Claypit to be 31, but fourth grade to be 14. So I would assume that would mean you'd change, you'd add a section in third grade and take a section away in fourth grade or something like that.
Right.
So this is projected with the current number of classrooms that are, it's not projected as to what, what you actually are going to do next year as projected with the current number of rooms, I get it.
Does that mean that the current Locur fifth grade is typo? It says 36.
It says 36. Are there only two fifth-grade classrooms at Locur?
Yes, actually, it's not typo, that's correct because of the Spanish immersion.
So there are 36?
There were two, no, no, no. So next year, there will be only two regular fifth grade and one Spanish immersion at Locur.
No, but this is...
But this year, this year it says there are two classrooms and 71 students.
No, this year, there are three fifth-grade sections.
So there are three, so it's just a typo.
So it must be a typo, yes. It's next year that we have two regular and then one Spanish immersion.
So there'll be three.
So basically what you're saying is, it's all going to work out?
Yes, it always do every year, but yes, it will. The shuffle happens and falls in place.
Okay.
I think the, the big message is we're not adding any classrooms.
Right, that's, and that's the key, just have to hire more, right, right. Now, while we're on that, I'm just going to point this out now. Because with the new development now starting to become full capacity, we are seeing an increase in new registration going to Claypit because of the zoning of that.
You're talking about River's Edge?
Yes, on River's Edge.
Yeah.
So what I'm going to, what we're going to be switching to is a centralized registration. So that means families should now register through a central office because then I would have to place students now based on the class size available because they have to go straight to Claypit. Like right now, whenever the increase in two, two extra fourth graders go into Claypit, that pushes the number to 26 in each section. Because River's Edge is zoned for Claypit, automatic appearance registered there. But now if they go to the central office, we'll look at Locur, Happy Hollow, and place them based on the bus route to make sure we don't over-populate that certain classroom.
Is that true for all students or just River's Edge students?
That's true now for all students.
All students.
Okay, five.
That's a change, that's a change.
That's a huge change.
That means it's not really different schools.
Yeah.
Well, it's still a neighborhood school, but we want to control the sections and where kids go into school. Now...
For the boundary?
But it's for the boundaries.
Buffer zone?
The buffer zones are still in place. But because of trying to make sure that we put the students in a classroom that's not 26 students in a section, we want to kind of place them individually per school based on availability of space, which essentially what would happen if, so if someone, right now, if we register for Claypit in fourth grade and you live in Claypit's zone, I would have to place the student because of the size of the classroom. Because it's over that limit.
I do, I do get the math, yeah, totally get the math.
Right.
What I'm wondering is more a question of kind of equity and then expectation kind of colliding with each other. Because most people, when they buy a house, they look at the school nearby, they look to which school their child will be going to. There, I think, is especially in elementary school, a preference for being right down the street. And so what I wouldn't want to have happen is that there are certain areas of town where the kids are placed. And then there are other areas of town where you can expect to be going to the school that's closest to you. Like I think that's...
Isn't that what we have?
So is it?
But when you buy a house in the buffer zone, you know it's in the buffer zone.
No, we already have that though. So we have, I know people who live across the street from each other and their kids, one's at Locur, one's at Happy Hollow.
Right.
But they're in a buffer zone.
But that's because we have some streets where the dividing line is down the middle, right? And then we have, we have the buffer zones. But when you buy a house in the buffer zone, you know you're in the buffer zone. You can get that, that information, right? And then there are certain places where if you buy a house, at least right now, you're going to be in the school that is designated for your...
Well, and then the other problem is when people relocate, they might move from one school zone to another and then they request to stay because they liked the school they were in and don't really, they want this other house, but they don't want the school that goes with it.
Right.
So that's going to become more of an, you're going to be saying no more to people when they relocate, I think, unfortunately.
And that's been happening and, you know, those conversations have been happening.
But is, is River's Edge in a buffer zone? Or are you making it a buffer zone?
River's Edge...
Or it's not called that anymore?
They can go Claypit based on where it is, based on what it's, but now...
So are you redoing the buffer zone?
But I wouldn't, I don't want to say redistricting the buffer zone because that would be a little much.
Well, we've done it before.
But I want to, because I don't, so if we don't do it this way, we'll have 30 kids in a fourth-grade classroom. Which is another way...
I get that, but, but when you go onto the website, you see the buffer zones, or at least you used to be able to, right? So I'm, I'm just...
Is it most of the town a buffer zone?
Yeah.
Well, now it is, yeah. It's in there, right?
Yeah.
I think we're just really saying that it probably needs to be sort of planned out and communicated.
Right.
Is really what we're saying. It's not something, it's a change that if sort of made without, you know, a lot of lead time, it will probably cause a lot of confusion and concern. I think that's really what we're saying.
I think that when we did it before, we did it around 2013, when we did the study, the space utilization study at Locur. I think it was, anyway, when we did it before, there was a lot of communication to parents about exactly how it was going to work and where the buffer zones would be and sort of setting expectations about this is how it's going to work. So I think it is something that most parents think about and are concerned about. So I just would want to be sure that we know what rules we're following, we're following the same rules for everybody and that we communicate them out.
I think we need to think about busing too. Like I know, like I was talking, and this is out of our control, but I was talking to somebody the other day and a parent was sharing that her kid at Claypit is now on the bus like extra long because now it goes to River's Edge. And it didn't until like recently.
The new, the new development, right?
Right, so, and so like partially through the year, it started. She was like, "I have to go pick her up because she's not going to be home in time for a class."
I mean, in reality, when River's Edge becomes fully occupied, there's a good chance that we might have to run a new bus there just for that development. And that doesn't mean that all those kids from their goals to Claypit, it just, so nothing's changed as of now. I'm mentioning it now because we're talking about these sections. We are, we are meeting and planning to figure out how that would look. But if, if it's easier for, well, it's not easy because even if a student, a parent, family registered or live, moved to River's Edge and go to Claypit to register for a fourth-grade classroom, right now, I would have to place them anyways because there is, there is no room in those classrooms.
Right.
Right, so to try to figure out to get ahead of that is what we're trying to plan. What does it look like? Does it need to just, so eventually, if that's the case, then that would come to you to figure out if you want to rezone River's Edge area as a buffer, just take it off the table altogether.
So are we over the number of enrollments from this new development than was anticipated and projected when the town proposed it?
I don't know what they projected to begin with.
So I asked that question not that long ago. And I think, I don't, I don't know where we are with the numbers, but I think the numbers were considered when it was first proposed.
They usually are.
But I don't, I'm not sure if it was ever updated, so...
And that's my thought is, so we're in this situation now and now we're like, buffer zones, over-enrollment in our classrooms. And there are more developments coming up. And I know I've said this before and this is sort of related to the elementary class size, I guess. So I hope, so that's what I'm trying to do right now. But I just have serious concerns if we're going to keep adding developments, what it's going to do because we're already seeing the effects. And then we really need to have some real conversations about how this affects our budget that then we're asked to cut, right? Because if we need new buses, if we need more class sections, if our schools...
Well, what it really affects...
This is worrying, not just this one, it's just...
We don't even have to physically capacity.
What is really affects is the need for the new, new school, right? Which is a huge financial commitment on top of the increased budget, the new school and then staffing.
Yeah.
Additional space, so I agree with you, but, but I don't know who on the town side is considering all these new developments.
But I mean, somebody has, we have, someone has to, right? Because we can't keep being in this situation and then cut this funding and then...
We'll just end up with really big class sizes.
You can't put kids here, but like there's no other place to put them.
Right.
We've got to like figure this out.
Yeah.
Otherwise, this is going to be a nightmare, especially if more things get approved.
I mean, so we also have to probably start thinking about maybe having a conversation because I do think we have a ceiling in the class size and that might be, need to be discussed potentially.
That's the target limit, they're already pretty high.
Right.
At the middle school and the high school, because all these kids funnel into one, a middle school, right?
Yeah.
And it's not like we have huge extra room at the middle school.
Right.
So to me, that's going to be a... So now this is looking like, I mean, I don't know where that, I haven't followed that development, so I don't know where it is in terms of being fully occupied. But this is looking like the new school is more of a...
A necessity than a...
A need than a want.
Right. I don't know if it's fully occupied, but I believe it's fully complete.
And we're not going to...
My guess is it'd be close to fully occupied.
And we wouldn't get a new school until seven years after we ask, ask for one, right?
Give our take, five to seven, yeah.
So I don't know how we have that conversation with the town that like, and I know I've said it before, but I really truly think like with this, I mean, we have kids we want to service and we want to give them the best we can and we want to give all the kids here the best we can. It needs to be, like somehow we need to work together to make sure that what's being done works for these kids.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. I think it's a longer conversation, right?
It totally is, but I'm just like, I was just looking like class size and then we started talking about buffers and I'm like, oh my gosh.
Yeah. Okay. So... Where are we then, sorry?
Well, we can, on the ARPA memo.
Now we're into the memo, right, Jeanne?
I guess so.
Are we done with, are we done with everything?
Unless you guys have more questions, but I think we, there are nothing else for kindergarten.
Okay, we can go into the ARPA memo then.
Do you want me to say this stuff, Easy?
Yes, please.
Okay, well, in your Dropbox is a draft of a memo to, let me find one, I guess, to, was like when ARPA Subcommittee about possibly reopening, looking at the allegations of the funds and considering funding partially, partially funding full-day kindergarten. So this is something that we talked about last time about sending and... Let me through and see what you think.
I thought we were asking them to fully fund it for this year.
We are, but if you look on page two, it has, it has...
The layout is down below.
The layout's there, fully fund, fund 50%.
Are we going to go back to it being 460, right, Jeanne?
Yep. I'm making that change as we speak.
Have you guys had conversations? I thought, I thought there were going to be some more conversations or did you have conversations together and decide that a memo was the next?
No, I thought that's what we decided in our last school...
We need to approach them with...
With a memo?
Well, with detail.
I thought you guys assigned me to do this, so...
So the red, the red, you just need to add that information?
Yeah, the red is just... So a couple of things. Wanted to acknowledge that we've already gotten some ARPA funds because we have. So that's in the kind of first sentence. So this is part of the next lot of ARPA funding. And the other thing that I was advised to include, and I just don't know how to include it, it's at the very bottom because I needed to ask Dr. Easy probably. So we, so the schools made requests for this, for other things, for this part of the funding, right? That didn't get approved, right? And so are we prioritizing, asking them to reopen this and prioritizing the full-day kindergarten over those other reports?
Yes.
So I think that that's important probably to add to the memo.
So that's what that little thing is called?
Well, they definitely denied the previous ask, right?
Well, that was my answer. Yes, but if there were an opportunity because something fell through and they reopened it and they looked at these other, they have a whole list of things that they said no to, but they might, you know, if they were to, for whatever reason, be able to look at them, would they, you know...
I would say they did fund two years of full daycare.
Okay, but that's not, that's not what I'm asking.
Yeah, I think...
But I'm just saying, I'm just saying about prioritizing. Like this is, you're prioritizing this over the others. I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah.
So I'm going to add that in somewhere and just haven't really figured that out. And also, I really want Dr. Easy and Tom to just fact-check this to make sure that...
The memo?
Yeah, to make sure that...
Yes, we will do that.
I mean, this is just me.
Tom will have it go through tomorrow.
But that's a lone problem.
So I also like, it's good.
Go ahead, what were you going to say?
Okay. I don't want to noodle too much.
You don't want what?
Noodle too much.
Okay.
Noodle what you want. Noodle if you want.
So the one thing that Dr. Easy asked, and Tom, is to change the 457-772 to 460, because if you think about next year, you have to build in the coalless and stuff.
That $3,000 will kick us right up to where we need to be?
Well, the 457 is what we budgeted for next year.
For this year, right.
It's like 22.
We will look at it tomorrow, Tom and I, and put the exact amount in there for next year, projected.
Well, that's kinda hard to do. 460 is a nice round number, so.
I wasn't being critical of the number.
No, we got it.
I totally...
Totally understand that.
So what is our, what are we doing? Are we approving this, or are we just being aware of it?
No, I think you, you guys have to, the school committee has to decide they want to send this, and that it wants to send it if they, if this is what they want to send.
Should we speak to the item that... So I've heard a few times that the town's approach with ARPA has been capital, not, capital expense, not operating, because they don't wanna have a situation where you do something that's in operating, and the next year they have a void that they have to make up in the operating budget. Should we speak to that, address that somehow in the memo?
We could, yeah.
Isn't that the plan, though? I thought the plan was to defer paying for a full day kindergarten for a little while by doing it this way. When Dr. Easy presented his plan, it was that a year or two years, I think, down the road, we would be putting this in the operating budget.
Yeah.
Right?
Half in, in point of...
So that's intentional.
So this is a...
So I would include that information that Dr. Easy had.
Right, right.
Is there a, is there a...
But Chris, you're thinking that we should add a specific sentence that we acknowledge that...
We acknowledge sort of the...
That it's capital, but...
The viewpoint. I just think, I think it would be a question if we don't address it, I guess is all I'm saying. So perhaps if we can address it in the memo somehow, it will reduce...
But ARPA is not designated by, it's not designated for capital expenditure.
No, it's not.
It's just a town decision.
It's the town's approach.
Approach.
It's been the approach, that's my understanding.
What were you gonna say?
So the town approach, I think, is one thing, but they can't negate the ruling and guidelines from the state, which talks about lost learning and early childhood services.
Right, but I think, I think what Chris is saying, though, is to acknowledge that the town is focusing on capital, and we're asking them to focus on, this is operating, but we will pull it into the budget, right?
Right.
Without asking for an extra appropriation. Is that, is that right?
And within two years, after two years.
Yeah, that's what, that's what it says under the finances section.
Yeah, it does it, that.
In the bullets, I guess I'm just suggesting we also just somehow, in wording in a statement, just be a little bit more clear.
We'd like to keep it in our operating budget now.
How about something like...
Could I just ask one question? With respect to amount. You sent us what was received from the ARPA Subcommittee and the Select Board...
Yeah.
On December 5th.
Yeah.
Date of December 5th. And at the end, it states that if the Select Board votes to expend the additional 1.68 million, which they, the Subcommittee suggested December 5th, there's a balance of approximately $700,000.
Yes.
We would basically be suggesting that we, as the schools, get the remaining $700,000 of ARPA funds for the next, and that'll be it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I think, I think that $700,000 that they have is they've reserved because they're not sure how the contracts will come in for the capital item. So they didn't want to, this is what I've been told. They didn't want to specifically assign that to a specific project until they knew that they had the money. If that makes sense. But you're right, it's that there is that little buffer there, the $700,000.
But that's it, that'll be...
That's it.
And so the 460 plus the 2...
28.
460 plus 230, basically, right? Yeah.
Not saying we shouldn't, just wanted to...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's our ask.
Yeah, exactly. Which kind of almost equals that a little bit. So, Chris, if we said something about that we acknowledge that, you know, I don't know if I use that word, but that the town has, has allotted things for cap, made a decision with capital, but we think that this is important, this is important enough to use towards operating funds, and that, as you can see below here or whatever, we plan to...
We're committed to...
We're committed to taking it into the budget.
Yes, I just, I, we don't have to make that change or that addition. I just think it could prevent questions. But if the committee doesn't wanna make that addition or that change, then that's fine.
I'm okay with it. What's everyone else think? And this is more directed to Dr. Easy and Tom. In that sentence, if we say we're committed to incorporating it into our operating budget, we're incorporating it into our operating budget as part of the usual operating budget, like not an extra, I don't know how to say this, so it, so I make sense. But you know, let's just say the recommended operating, the recommended budget guideline in two years is 4%, and so we've got four, you know, between four and 5% with, and that would include full day kindergarten, as opposed to it being an extra ask on top.
Correct.
Is that what you both see? Okay. Dr. Easy, you see that too?
Yeah, I mean, I think the timeline is, is to plan this out and give the town, and you, the school committee, two, three years to roll this into operating.
Right.
If we get it covered next year and half the following year, at least we know by FY '26, that's not even gonna be a proposed ask, it's just, that's part of our level service. Or can we just get it this year on, on wanting to operate?
So I, so I'm thinking of using the word, we're committed to full day kindergarten. Are people good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Jeanne, we'll work from the shared doc that I shared with you, and then we make the adjustments, and so you can see it, right?
Okay. But is everyone okay with that? Because after tonight, you won't see it, unless you wanna see it again next week before we send it. I think Dr. Easy's interested in sending it soon.
I was, alright, I'm gonna say what I was gonna say earlier. I think it would help, it would help educate the town about the importance of this if, and I don't know if this is what you're intending to do, but in that little red section where you talk about explaining the DIBELS? DIBELS is, to the extent that the DIBELS is diagnostic of how students are going to do going forward, I think what you need to be able to show to the town in this memo is some information, preferably data, information that explains to them why this is going to improve student, student performance, and in the end, not only make students learning better, but also hopefully reduce the cost of students who don't, who are not able to keep up with the, the average of the class, so. And I think DIBELS is usually indicative of that, that's all I'm saying, is that to tie it in like that.
Yeah, I mean, the red part about DIBELS.
To me, the intent is that we, if we send this memo, then I'm hoping that they will ask us to come and kind of present to them, you know...
What's that though?
Let's off of that at the end.
We'd be happy to come.
No, absolutely, I, yeah, so we can, then we can walk them through the slides that we talked about, right? And just give them information that they would probably need to know as to why we need this to happen now, right? I'm also gonna have some more data in regards to those students who enter kindergarten in those years, where are they now in second grade, how much did they grow, did they close that gap? And gonna show a little bit more the cost of getting them there, right? So there is the notion that half-day, half-day students cover the same amount of curriculum in a full-day student, but that's, that's just not feasible, right?
And now that so many surrounding districts are doing full-day kindergarten, it's like kindergarten is the new first grade.
Right.
Right.
Well, in kindergarten, the way half-day is explained is that there's no new information presented in the afternoon. It's more of like enrichment, and you're doing extra reading or math or more.
But that, but that is what's always been said.
I know, I know, that's... Yeah, so in other words, like all the core academics are done in the morning, and the afternoon is sort of extra, is kind of what...
Yeah, so the kids are still getting more.
Right.
If you're there, it's just not new stuff.
Particularly students who repetition is beneficial for their learning, which is a lot of students when they're...
But if everyone went to full-day kindergarten, you wouldn't have to worry about that.
Right, yeah. And I don't know if there's even a way to figure out kids who did half-day versus full-day and where they are x years later.
Someone did that analysis.
Someone did that analysis, like, we've been talking about this for a very long time. But I mean, it could change now, especially after the pandemic, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I would imagine a big part of it is learning how to be in school. When you're in kindergarten, you're learning, right?
Totally, how to follow every day, yeah.
Seems like it would help.
So here's actually some extra data, you didn't see this data the last time I presented this document. I got some, got some survey information. And from the nine, 12, or 10s, parents or families who are selecting half-day, cost is the reason why they're doing this.
Wait, but how did one, isn't Spanish immersion, is Spanish immersion optional, half and full?
So, if you're in Spanish immersion, you don't have a choice, you have to pay for full day.
Okay. And then so that one that said Spanish immersion, was there a reason for picking half-day?
Maybe they didn't get into Spanish immersion.
No, but if they're in Spanish immersion, you can't go to half-day, so I'm not too sure how that translates.
That might be a mistake.
Right.
Yeah.
But because, because it's not only the cost of, I can't afford it, which is a very real, a real thing, but it's also, if you're paying the cost of going somewhere else, right? And it's cost, a lot of parents, I think, keep their child there now for kindergarten because they've been there, it's the convenience, you know, and then they come in first grade. So if kindergarten were no fee, we'd get the kids earlier, we could intervene earlier. I think I put that in the memo somewhere. Okay, so what do you guys wanna do with this?
A memo?
Yeah, do you wanna send this?
Yeah, so you're gonna add that point about...
I will.
We are happy to come.
I'm gonna add, we are happy to come discuss, I'm gonna add the capital thingy. The data element you said, there are a bunch of data points in here, but we can look and see if there are more to add. What else, besides fact checking?
I think that covers it. So you guys are looking to get this sent out soon, right? So should we...
Well, we guys, it's really us.
Oh, right. Well, I didn't mean it that way, I meant...
I know, I know, I know.
Dr. Easy would like us as a committee to get this sent over soon, right?
Yeah, I think this is, it's a timeline that Brian had mentioned to us, that they need to kind of allocate the funds appropriately within a certain time. So we wanna get this to them so we can reconvene a Subcommittee for us to discuss.
Is there any benefit to addressing the fact that our intention was to include that in our budget this year? And we were asked to cut our budget by X percent?
So that's there.
It is there?
Yeah.
I didn't read it in detail, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, it only got put up there this afternoon. It says... It is in here. Oh, here we go. No, finance, under the finances section on the second page.
Oh, yeah, the recommended...
It said, "When working with the town to develop a townwide budget that is financially feasible, the town superintendent reluctantly removed F-Day, full-day kindergarten from FY '24 recommended budget to bring the budget in line with the fiscal realities of the town."
I don't know that I would. Sorry.
That's good, that's why I want you guys to read it, tell me what...
Well, it hasn't been removed from the budget.
Right.
Okay, so, so we need to come up with a way that says it how we want it, but isn't...
But it needs to be, to be saying that the town is asking the schools to cut $731,000 for day K would inevitably be the first cut to be made since we won't jump into services to students instantaneously. But it hasn't been removed because you haven't voted to remove it yet.
Maybe we should, maybe we should put a little paragraph in, Jeanne, I don't know, might be in there, but of the history of how many years we've considered full day K, which has gotta be about seven or eight now, and that it, it has been, it has been cut from the budget or rejected as a possibility, and that we are falling behind our peer towns in terms of educating our youngest students. And there's all this new evidence about how teaching kids who are really young, you get a lot more bang for your buck, the younger the brain, the more quickly they learn, right? That sort of an idea. And that we do not wanna cut it from the operating budget, but if we do have to cut it from the operating budget because of the $730,000 ask, right? We would like to make up for it with ARPA funds because we really believe this is something that the schools have to do right now.
Yeah, maybe we can refer to this as sort of alternative...
I don't know, at the beginning or the end, but some sort of a paragraph that introduces kind of the history of how we've considered this for so many years. It's, it's very similar to, I know this probably would annoy a lot of people, but it's very similar to our punting on a lot of the facilities improvements for all those years, and then kind of getting caught with paying more to put Band-Aids on things that we should probably have just stuck with asking for the money for. And a similar kind of waiting and waiting and waiting is not only hurting us economically, it's also hurting us, hurting our actual youngest students.
And what better way than to apply funds received from the government?
Thank you.
Than to apply them to our next generation?
Did you read my last sentence?
Absolutely.
So I think we do, and I'm sorry, but I think we do want to clarify that, along the same lines of all of this, is that, you know, it's in our budget, but when presented, when the town indicated we need to make some changes, we've made this change. But I don't wanna say creative solution, but like in all, this is an alternative solution, like we, the school... Dr. Easy and Tom, I can, in my opinion, worked to sort of find another option, and that's what this is.
Yeah, that's a good, that's good.
And I can go back and figure out how many years it's been, but I know we were talking about this when Barb was still on the...
Oh.
It's been since FY, FY '17?
No, more than that, more than that, more than that, we just started those lists then, but...
Actually, before those, on...
Oh, my gosh, I think since I, the whole time I've been on the Committee, we've talked about it. I think, but I could look.
I was gonna say like 2011.
Yeah.
Well, they first started full day K.
Imagine that.
When they turned Locur to a kindergarten school.
Yeah.
Remember that? 2008.
That's where...
2008.
No, 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 no. That was when we turned it to an all...
All kindergarten school.
Away, no, no, away from all kindergarten.
No, 2008, I got the backpack letter.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm getting my...
My kids were moved in that, in that thing, yeah. It was 2000 and...
My nieces went there, 2009, 10.
My oldest went there, but I was thinking her birth date instead of when she would have been.
Right, so two, so it was a couple years after that that they started full day K.
Yes. So, yeah, go ahead.
Nope.
I was just thinking.
The current ninth graders, I believe, were the last.
Were the last ones, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
And it eased in, like at first there were only like three classes, oh, yeah.
It was small.
So what I'm trying to be sensitive to, so I just wanna write it the right way, and I'm just saying this out loud, is I'm trying to be sensitive to the fact that our budget has come in above what the guideline was, right? And so, which is okay, because that, I mean, obviously we'd rather it not, but that's what we need to run the schools. And I'm trying to be sensitive... And I'm trying to be sensitive to, um, saying that we were asked to cut the budget. Because I guess we weren't, that's why I worded it the way I worded, but I will totally.
I know what you're saying.
Reword it.
Can we?
I'm just trying to be sensitive to how it will be received.
Is there still time for us to do a separate article on Full Day K?
Low, so not.
It's due Tuesday, because we're doing our other thing, we would have a vote on it tonight.
Okay.
But Ellen?
The reason I'm asking is that, is that that's a possible way of talking about it, that we've chosen, that we would like to have it in the operating budget. But that if the town doesn't want it to be in the operating budget, right? You're willing to talk about other funding alternatives, one is Dr. Easy's creative idea, another is just take it to the, to the voters. Take it to the town meeting.
But we have. I'm worried. We're asking for it this year. I just like.
That is, that is further to my point.
We already have, we have this other article that we're. I'm thinking we shouldn't write.
But, but asking is not, see, we always, this is how we get into this, we act like it's somehow our job not to ask.
Well, that's why we're asking.
Right.
Because, you know what, I'm sure that they're not really thinking they want to reopen the ARPA discussions, but if you don't ask, you never know what will happen.
They might actually prefer to just take it to the voters.
Well, how would we get that done? I mean, we really, it's due Tuesday.
Right, so what does it work for?
We have to write the article, it's not that hard, but we would have to vote on that.
We have the money, we know the number that we're asking for. We just have to write the article, we don't have to write comments or all that stuff, do just the article.
We don't really have.
Yeah, you have to write a few.
Summary of.
It's not that hard.
The budget, like, like a one.
But I think you'd have to decide as a committee.
It also would give them.
In the book?
Yep.
All right.
I don't know, I just think that if you think about. Politically, if you think about the taxpayers supporting whatever, right, that would give the taxpayers an opportunity to come and vote for Full Day K.
Right, so here, I really.
The problem is, people who who are supporting people who have the most difficulty getting there to, to vote on this.
And that's the, the other thing, the reason I actually now remember, is that then you'd have to do it every year, because you could only fund it for one year.
Yeah, and also the whole point of.
Right.
It would add to the tax level, right, in the past, it's.
Right, true. Okay, this is better.
So.
This is better?
Yeah.
Sorry.
No. All ideas are good. Okay, so where are we on this? I've got all the suggestions. Are we sending this memo?
I didn't think so, I'm gonna move that we send the ARPA funding for pre-day, pre- Full Day K. To. Board of Select.
Yeah, the Board of Selectment or the Board of, the ARPA Committee.
Board of Select and ARPA Committee, why not?
Maybe I wrote that, but no. Select Board and. And should it be from the school committee and Dr. Easy?
I think so.
Throw Tom in there.
Okay, Chris, did you know that Ellen just made a motion?
I seconded it. Diane, did you hear that motion?
Did you second?
Second. I'm gonna vote yes. Okay.
Do my, sorry, do my repeating.
I made a motion to approve the ARPA funding memo. And it was seconded by Jess.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
So, Dr. Easy.
Yeah, I see, I'm sorry, yes.
So you and I are gonna work on this?
You and I.
So we can get it done, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
And we plan to send it, when, Friday?
Yeah, sure. I'm good with that, if you're thinking about.
All right. So we'll work on the.
Whose email should have come?
Chris. Chris probably.
So Chris, we'll send it to you when it's finished, and you can send it.
Well, we can put it on the school committee letterhead that Diane has and send it from there, when we're ready to go.
Okay. Yeah, that's true. Okay. Okay, great. I'll pick it up.
Okay. Okay, so we're done with that, and we can go into administrative matters? So the next item is the update regarding the next steps to address anti-racism. So, um, I know that in the past few meetings, we've talked about, um, different ideas and we've received emails as a committee with some suggestions and ideas. And I know that Jess and Ellen, um, at a couple of meetings ago, we talked about the two of you working together to have conversations with various people in the district about some ideas, so. I thought we should, um, kind of go through that, so I don't know if you guys have, want to share sort of an update on some conversations or ideas that have been discussed?
Sure. Do you want to, can we start, Ellen?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, we were, Ellen and I were focused, I believe, on action steps and like things we can actually do and help get done. So the one thing that we moved forward with was looking at our policy manual and the student handbook at the high school, to see if affinity groups fit. Now, there is nothing preventing affinity groups from forming in our policies, and there is nothing preventing it in the high school handbook. Looking at the clubs, there were various clubs listed, however, what Latoya pointed out was it does say all clubs are open to all students. And what they're really looking for is to maintain the membership of those of a certain group. So this is where we are right now, this is kind of.
Confused about it.
This is what I feel like where, I don't see, in our conversation Ellen and I had with Latoya via Zoom, actually, so in that conversation, there are various ways that they could go about this, like would it be social, emotional, and does that fit? But I think from our standpoint, unfortunately, as a school committee, like policy is our realm and budget. We've kind of hit that wall, right, where what can we actually do? Well, we can make sure there's policy that does not contradict what they're trying to do, and there is not policy that contradicts what they are trying to do. So what is the next step? Like, how do we help guide them to get affinity groups going is sort of where we are.
Can I just ask some clarifying questions? We, I thought we have affinity groups, but in other districts, there have been issues that have sort of, um, caused those districts to not be able to do their affinity groups, and we were concerned that that could happen in Wayne.
So the second part of what you said is accurate?
Okay.
That in other districts, that's what's going on, but we don't currently, according to Latoya, there would, they do not have, currently have affinity groups. They have gotten together when there are issues that happen in an affinity type of group, but they're not official groups that consistently meet.
I think Latoya is, was talking, correct me if I'm wrong, Jess, but my impression of what Latoya was saying was that there would be some sort of school, not sponsored, but school recognition that affinity groups are welcome or are okay. And that's because the, the, the nuance with it that's come up in other districts is there are some suggestions out there that affinity groups are not appropriate in public school, because in public school, the education is supposed to be universally available to all students who are, attend schools, right? So the question is the spot, the question is the official imprimatur on, on a group that is exclusive to, exclusive of some students.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
That's the, that's the unit, or the, the balance of it, right?
So would it, should our policy be adjusted to provide better clarification of what we support?
So there's no really policy to adjust, it would probably be adopted, well.
And then I made a point, let me pull it up.
Well, I thought you said that there's a wording in policy that suggests.
Not a policy.
That's a handbook, right?
The handbook.
Oh, a wording in the handbook.
The student handbook. So is this something we talked to Al, or not us, but that Latoya would talk to Allison about? Or is this something that maybe we
I wonder if we should, well, I wonder if we should reach out to MASC and see if there's any
What they did.
Advice on policy that would address this.
Yeah, we can do that. I just, at this point, like, so where we had left it was, I was like, yes, you can do this, like, we have these other clubs that are specific to a group, and she said, but it says all students are welcome, and then that's where I was like, right, what do we do now?
Okay.
So, but yeah, I can do that.
Maybe mass association school committees can help us with guidance, policy guidance to address it?
Yeah. No, just what do I do if we? I guess I'm thinking ahead and maybe I should, but what if I reach out to them and they're like, you can't do that? Like then, what do we, like?
We'll cross our, that bridge when we get there.
We're gonna go with yes, is gonna be the answer, and they're gonna have great ideas and suggestions.
Exactly.
I like that better, but I always like to be prepared for my no, so I can counteract it. But, okay. Um, so that's kind of like where we actually are. Ellen, do you, do you want to add anything else?
Um, I think we, so we did talk about that, we also talked about the, um, the event that the Boston Parents Council is planning on January seventeenth. And I think their feeling of it is, and I, please correct me if I'm wrong, Jess, but my sense from Latoya was that they would like to have support. There are some statements that they plan to put out to parents and to staff in the schools, that Latoya had drawn up and has been read to us. But they don't really want us to kind of, I think the word she used was, they don't want us to take over, they just want us to respect it and, and support it from from where we are. I guess that's, that's the way I felt about, that's what, and also, we also talked about how Latoya recognized that we can't really approve kids missing school, like that's not, that's not part of our group, what we do, right? On the other hand, we can kind of recognize that, um, the importance of the, of what the parents, that the Boston Parents Council is trying to say and recognize the message, and recognize that delivering those kinds of messages in the environment that we're in, or in response to the racist graffiti, that that's also an important, um, civic responsibility and, and, and a good education for our students, our whole Mecca community, both the Boston students and the students that live in. That, I don't know if I put that
No, that was good.
Particularly enough, but that's kind of what we said.
I'm trying to find somewhere I have, um, so families are really taking this over and connecting with the Boston Parent Council and sort of sending out information that way, that's how they're.
So that we don't have to do it through official channels?
Yeah, and I'm trying to find one of the, I'm trying to find some of the info, so one of, and for some reason it's not coming up in my email, but, um, the Boston Parents Council have asked Wayland parents to keep their kids home in a show of solidarity to acknowledge how disenfranchised black and brown students feel in this town. It's called the Day of Impact. And then blah, um, lots, that's, basically, that's what I have there, I'm trying to find more info for you guys, sorry. On the Day of Impact that's going around, just to kind of share it, um, because there are other ways that they're asking to support as well, like, you know, if there's something special going on in the school, like to maybe.
The Happy Hollow elections.
Yes.
Were going on, or a big test in like, you know, B C Kelk or whatever, right? That they're, that they're asking the schools to be sensitive to the fact that this is the Day of Impact and not plan things that would, that kids would, would miss out on.
Yeah, so that's definitely one of the, I have more, here it is, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure who sent it out, so. And this, again, so the hard thing is it's going to groups, like people are pushing it through their groups of friends, so I don't know how much the community as a whole is actually getting the info. So this, there is a spreadsheet, so you can connect with each other about the Day of Impact if you want. I mean, I guess, I don't even know how you would share that, but, um, so, okay, so this is more formal, I guess, it says Day of Impact, the parents are taking a stand, will be keeping their kids out of school to show their solidarity for each other, our children, the programs, and their frustrations with this and previous racist acts in the Wayland public schools. It is believed that this is an action and the conversations of the past have been just that with no sustained progress. The absence of our children from school is to bring awareness to the presence of Mecca in our district. Events like the horrible graffiti at the high school and on other various schools in the district over the past few years can make people of color and particular, particularly black and brown people feel isolated and like their presence isn't wanted or welcomed. Wayland community members are invited to join in this act as their absence will show that they see us, Mecca students, families, and the program. And that says, feel free to spread on social media, the Boston Parent Council's on this email. It feels terrible that it took such a dehumanizing act to galvanize us. I believe there are many, many people who believe in anti-racist education and want to be allies and even better accomplices. And then, that's about it. So if there's, I don't know, like this is my part, like a, somebody sent it to me, it's not like a school committee thing, so I guess sharing it was appropriate, but like you said, Ellen, we can't like promote skipping school. So.
It's just kind of a fine line.
Yeah, and we talked about the grant, uh, that was brought up.
Oh, right.
And that doesn't happen until later in the year, so.
The roadmap grant?
Mm-hmm. So that's later in the year, and then I have a question out.
Later in the calendar year, or later, what do you mean?
Like, no. It's, it's gonna take them about a month to have the details.
Yeah, they don't have the info yet, it's not time to apply for it.
Okay. But we, it's on our radar to apply once we can?
Yeah, and then we, I did ask her about professional development, um, for us specifically, and like what we need to do, and um, I haven't heard back yet, so that's kind of where we are.
And then, I was thinking maybe, I wonder if there's a way that there could be some sort of presentation to us on sort of what is done in the schools or what is currently being done, being done in the schools in terms of how, you know, anti-racism and DEI are incorporated into sort of the day-to-day school day, I think that would be. I don't know, does anyone?
So that is something we could do, so we talked about how we are not in charge of professional development except for this group, right? But maybe in professional development, plus it is staff and students, but maybe that, maybe we could do that, maybe we could get, um, some information or a presentation on what is, what has come out of this for staff and students.
Yeah, I think that would.
We didn't really talk about that specific note, but, um.
Falls on the budget?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah.
In general.
It does, yeah. And, and if there is, if there is funding that's needed for whatever, um, improvements or additional, um, education. Yeah. Anti-racist education, they want to put it in the schools. But it's not really our job to do the details.
Agreed.
Because we're.
Yes.
Right, agreed.
Really supposed to be in charge of curriculum.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
So we talked about that too.
Yeah, and there are like the, I mean, I do see like actions being taken in our town, like the group of students and families who are selling bracelets and they're donating the funds for something to do with anti-racist education or professional development. So there's, there are actions being taken and it's nothing we're gonna fix today or tomorrow, but we're working on actual steps that we can take and that fall into our purview, like we can't really cross the lines and demand this right now, unfortunately.
Right, right.
Okay.
So I, if I, if I may, I think, um.
Please.
So the schools have been doing a lot regarding cultural competencies and anti-racist training. And we are currently planning to do some things for, um, in District Service Day in February fourteenth, so we're, we're covering those criterias and those curriculum pieces from a school standpoint, but I think, I guess my question would be, what are we doing for the community as a whole outside of the schools? Right? I feel like we're focusing so much on the teachers and the students and the schools, but we are just, we are just a part of, we serve the community, we're part of the community and what's happening on the community side of things. I don't know if, but obviously you guys are community members and resident. I don't know if, but obviously, you guys are community members and residents, so that, that, to me, should be more kind of some of what we are looking to do, right? How are we involving the community?
Well, I think we would work with the town on that, right?
Right, yeah.
With the H R D E I.
H R D E I. Yeah, and I do know some parents have stepped up and are kind of digging in to do work, that whatever that work is, and trying, and connecting, and trying to get more done for the community as a whole. I just know that, like, I know someone doing that, that's why I say that. But, um, yeah, I guess our connection to that is just if we start to like work with the H R D E I C, so.
Yeah, which we can do. I mean, I've been, had conversations with the chair and the vice chair.
Yeah.
So they would be more than happy to be collaborating with us. So we can add that as part of this, definitely.
But I think it would be a nice idea, Dr. Easy, to hear what's going on in the schools. Doing this, to go to Chris's point, for, just for our benefit. And perhaps the community's benefit, right?
Yeah, I, I don't think, no, we can definitely do that, not the obvious.
But I, I understand your point about the community. I also think it would be nice to hear what's happening in the community or what we can do to work, you know, perhaps have them, H R D E I.
Work together.
Yes, perhaps they can come and we can talk about it, what we can do to work together.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah. I think both would be good.
And like anything, I mean, it's hopeful to think that everyone will work towards this goal together as a community, but, like, I just also, people who are, are going to, right? And people who are not, are not going to. So then, it's, I'm just not sure how we bring everybody together to be on the same page and be committed to the same thing, I guess, is what, I mean, we're a community and, but everybody in the community has their own thoughts and opinions, so.
Yeah.
I'm just, I don't know why I say that.
No, I, I hear you. Okay, any questions? Anyone have any questions or any other?
Questions or ideas or suggestions for us? Cause like, I'm not a big fan of just like meeting and talking, just to, you know, meet and talk. I like to like, be like, all right, now what are we gonna do? Like, how are we doing this? What's the next step?
Well, I do think reaching out to H R D E I.
Yeah, we'll do that.
And I had to, I had to put a, a very abrupt stop to our, our Zoom meeting because I had, we were way, way over the time. And I looked over and saw that it was three fifteen, I was like, right, so. Um, I think, any ideas you guys have?
And if anything comes to you, you have nowhere to find us, just.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
I mean, maybe we could be in touch with the H R D E I.
Yeah, I can send you, um, I can send you an email with the, with their email IFS. Great.
Okay. Uh, the next item, um, we can skip over, I, I haven't heard back on that. Third, the item after that is discussion possible vote to approve Special Education Stabilization Fund.
Okay, another thing in your folder, so draft article for the special stabilization, special.
Just write in one of these.
I know, right, and I want to first say, thank you, thank you to Tom, who gave me a bunch of information to help make this, to help put this together and also read through it for me. So, this is due on Tuesday, so we need to approve it tonight. The other thing, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but the other thing we need to vote on tonight as part of the statute is that as a school committee, we have to vote to establish the fund.
Correct.
So we need to vote that we want to establish the Special Education Fund, that Stabilization Fund. So, basically, when you look at this, the, this will be submitted and the, um, the, the top part above comments, you know, the town and the lawyers will get in the right wording. The comments, the final, you put these in as a draft and then the finance committee, someone works on it with you. Probably Michael Hoyle, he was saying he might, um, so I'm sure the comments will change, but it's just a bunch of background. But I think the biggest decision tonight is about funding of it. And Dr. Easy, we talked a little bit about that, but we didn't really come to a, an agreement, I mean, not an agreement, but come to a, a point. But the question is, this can be funded several ways. You can ask for, um, what's the word, it starts with an A?
Article?
No.
Allocation?
Yes, an allocation, I'm not sure what that's supposed to say, but, um.
Appropriation?
Yeah, appropriation, from town meeting, but that is, that is asking for money, right? From, that will be raised through taxation. We can, if there is money in the budget to transfer at the end of the year, we can do that. That isn't looking like that might be an op, uh, thing.
An option.
An option this year. We can just set up the fund this year and not, you know, put money in it and then start trying to put money in it last year. There's several different places to go, so. Dr. Easy, did you have more thoughts on that, about funding it?
No, I mean, I think if, if we would have, which is very unlikely, any carryovers from last year to next year, this year to last year, we would put it into our circuit breaker prepaid.
Right, as opposed to this?
Right, because the real reason to have this, this account is so that the town is putting some funds away each year, a hundred thousand, a little fifty thousand a year. It maxes out at about a million, something.
A little over a million.
Anyways, but I think for the committee to know, the key piece of the article is the school department or the school administration does not want access and/or the authority to write money or pay from that account. That should go into the town manager. So we provide a P O if we need to use the funds and they, they sign off on it. We don't wanna have anything to do with that piece, so it's not being screwed as we're having this slush fund. We don't, we only want to use it if we need it, so we provide a P O and there should be.
So the way the statute works, as opposed to other capital stabilization funds we have that you have to get appropriate, an appropriation each year to fund it, this is, whatever this statute is that's referenced, is allows it so that expenditures can be made all year and they just have to be approved, right? By the school committee and by the board of, or by the select board, right? Right? So when you say the P O from the town manager, what do you mean?
And this, so the article has to be written, so if, if the article is written where the select board has to take a vote to approve payment for our district placement, that will be, um, not ideal.
But isn't that what the statute says? I mean, if you look on, in, on the statute and the web, and the Desi website, I thought that's what happened.
The article could be written that the town manager could do that, based on the Town Managers Act that we have in place in the town now.
So that's something to find out.
Right.
Which we don't have to decide tonight, because that's not part of the actual.
Isn't that something they would, they would be able to determine, right? On the town side?
Right, cause that's not part of the, that's just the mechanics.
We're not approving in specific language, we're just approving.
Yeah, and we're not approving the mechanics.
So it's basically two articles, right, Genie, I could have one, all together for funding and opening. So open and fund.
Uh-huh, but we can cross out, be the funding part if we're not funding it this year. But I think that's a decision we need to make. So the cost is either zero or it's something. Or it's zero and we say, well, but we're not gonna have money to put in it, so I don't know.
So, we would, if, if we have money, which we're at the end of the year, which we, sounds like we won't, we would put it into Circuit Breaker rather than the Stabilization Fund?
I think that.
If we can't move money between the General Fund and Circuit Breaker, we would actually have to reclass some expense that was on Circuit Breaker back to the General Fund and we'd actually fund, do a general entry. There's no actual movement of cash, it's movement of expense. So I did that when I first arrived, we had a little bit, so we prepaid, I still remember the number, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars to spend tuition. And we reclassed to carry over the maximum amount we could legally carry in Circuit Breaker.
Right.
And luckily we did, because we're gonna use it this year.
Right, but if we, if at the end of the fiscal year, if at the end of the June, end of June, if, if we had anything, we would put that in Circuit Breaker rather than use it for this, this?
I would, because it's easier for us to access to pay tuition. In fact, we could just do it, we wouldn't have to go through any process to get approvals.
I see. Right.
So I think the first, what did, to maximize what we can do with Circuit Breaker balance going forward. Second would be a prepaid.
Right.
Which we can legally do up to twenty-five percent of our district tuition. So this is a substantial amount of pad if we have the cash.
Right. Okay, I understand.
I don't think we want to use that term, pad.
I, I was just confused, that's all.
And it works.
So, is the only option to fund it this year, to do it by appropriation?
From the town, yes.
So add it to the budget.
Yeah, so, so I think that's the decision we have to make is if we want to go down that route, we're not in this climate.
I think Tom thinks we should fund it at least a, a little bit. Or, am I wrong about that?
I think the voters would have an issue with just creating the fund and nothing else. So maybe just some, a token amount just to exceed the fund, so to speak. And then look at, hopefully, the position, we're in a better position a year from now.
It is a token amount, like ten thousand dollars or something?
That's, that's up to you.
When you've done these before, what's the amount to initiate the fund?
Uh, it was planned a few years in advance, so we, the last one I did was a hundred thousand. It's a separate one article. So they have one article to, to create the fund, and as soon as that was voted, then we're right to the next one to appropriate a hundred thousand.
Okay.
So, I guess I'll say, I'm not comfortable appropriating, asking for a lot of money, given what we're asking for in the budget and just the climate that we're in. But I'd be willing to do a small amount.
Yeah.
The smallest.
What's a small amount?
I don't know. Is that a hundred dollars?
I, I really like this idea, I really support this idea, but I would hate for us to jeopardize some of the other things that we also really want by perhaps asking for an amount that's not something that people would be receptive to.
Right, what did you say, ten thousand dollars?
That, I got that number from Tom.
It's a small amount. In the grand scheme of the budget, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Twenty-five thousand?
Well, it just is gonna, whatever number we pick, it's just gonna increase the budget by that amount, right?
Yeah, yes.
Could we ask for it to come from free cash?
Sure.
It's always. I, I also think that.
Well, you know what, a lot of times we've asked, it said, in things we've asked before, it says it'll be funded from appropriation, free cash, or other means deemed appropriate.
Right, right.
I think a lot of people don't understand how special education works and the requirements that the schools are under to provide services and.
How much COVID impacted the expense of that?
Yeah, so I am sensitive to the concern of the bigger climate and lack of increase in funds. I'm just wondering if we could put a little more education around this or, um, to the public to understand. I don't know.
Hey, we could, I mean, just as we lead up to it.
As we lead up to town meeting?
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah, we could definitely do that.
I think we talked about that, didn't we?
Yeah, we, I mean, we talked about having like some community meetings and stuff.
Okay.
But I think if the committee can't head on the same page or doesn't want to ask for money, then we should at least create the fund.
Well, what does everyone think? Do people want to put money into?
I think I would take the administration's advice. I don't, I don't think, I don't think whatever we put in is, is kind of a drop in the bucket, right?
Right.
Yeah, so it just does, it's just how big the drop is.
Right. So I, I think it does make sense to have an amount in there for what we're saying.
Great, so what amount do you want, do people want?
Well, the numbers that have been thrown out, ten, ten thousand was thrown out and twenty-five thousand was thrown out, so are we gonna?
And a hundred.
A hundred.
Okay, well, I don't think we're gonna do it. I, I can't vote for a hundred.
I was kidding.
You could make the motion, but I might have to vote.
So fifteen, should we split it in the middle?
But it's fine with me, but I don't know what everyone else says. You don't have to go with me just because I'm worried of them.
I'm just trying.
Move us on.
Yeah, I'm just not, I don't know what the right number is, so, I mean, I feel like what we're, the numbers we're talking about aren't gonna do a lot for the fund, so it's like, kind of irrelevant.
Yeah, it's just to establish it. I'm fine with fifteen. Are you?
Yes, I don't think it makes any difference at all.
Are you too?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Sure.
I'll do my own, it's hard for me to read your face.
I always.
No, I, I don't, I.
Okay, but then maybe what we'll put is from appropriation of free cash.
But if that's the case, then it's only a thousand dollars.
No, I'm not gonna do it.
I mean, I don't, I don't have a vote, but I'm, I would just recommend if we're gonna go that route, then it shouldn't be a hundred thousand dollars, because to Jess's point.
Do you think you will need a hundred thousand dollars next year?
It's very possible. To Jess's point, fifteen thousand dollars, wanting to get us a half a mile of gas to transport us to it.
But we're just trying to establish the fund.
This is, this will be a question, this will be a question that we will get.
Yeah.
How much, how much is, we'll be in the Circuit Breaker for next year? And how much, so how much extra money that do we have already available for next year?
But Tom is already using.
None?
From Circuit Breaker from next year already.
Fingers crossed, we're gonna break even.
But that's for this year.
But I'm even the balance.
So then there will be nothing.
What we're collecting this year is being used.
There will be nothing left over for next year.
Right.
Yeah.
Nothing to pull back.
So next year, we?
We're starting.
Which is why our.
We're starting, we're next year.
Yeah.
Negative.
Oh, I can't go negative.
So what's gonna happen if there are out of, new out of district placements next year? What's the, what's the proposed funding for that?
We're, we're hoping that we get the funding that we asked for currently in the budget for special ed.
Which is?
Five million dollars.
Which is the increase of, um, one point seven.
Yeah, it's five million dollars.
We get that, we know, so we, we cover what we anticipate going out right now. However, nine unilateral placements are not in that budget. If any of those hit in next year, that's the cost that we.
The increase is based on, on the ones that we know.
The five million dollars is the whole spit budget, not the out of district budget.
Right, that's right.
Right, and that's what we know we're gonna have to pay based on our demographics this year, right?
Yeah.
And then there are non-students who are on the bubble?
Well, they're not on the bubble, they're, they're already out, they're in district, right?
So they've, they've been uniformly placed by their parents.
The parents have placed and now they're asking for money for a possible funding.
You know what I'm saying, so that's.
So are they asking for money or they're just?
That, those processes have started.
But as Tom said, we can't budget for something we're not paying for.
So we can't budget for it, cause we don't, we're not, you know, we're not paying for it right now. But if it comes down that we can't service any of those students, then we gotta pay for it.
So we have nine students and
what did BJ say, like three hundred thousand dollars?
That's what I'm, that's where I'm going, is I'm thinking two fifty, that's where my head is right now.
To ask for in this article?
Well, so, because if we're gonna make it and, if we're gonna make it and fund it, then let's fund it with what we think we rationally might need.
Then why wouldn't we just put that in the budget?
So, but genie.
We can't.
Cause we can't put it in the budget.
Because it's not actually.
I, I understand.
But, but, but genie, but may I say to Ellen and Jess's point, if you put fifteen thousand in, let's say, five. let's say five of those placements hit, we now have to go to town for a special appropriation.
Yeah.
And then we say, well, you open this stabilization account and you only put, add to 15,000 dollars.
So if there's a special appropriation, what is required? Would you, is that a fall town meeting?
I don't know how to work.
I, but, but I understand that exactly. But I think the $15,000 number was just as Tom sort of said, just sort of a nominal amount to open up the, the account. And then the conversation went to sort of jeopardizing the other asks. And that's kind of how we reached the $15,000 amount. So I think we have two conversations.
Because we don't want to jeopardize our budget.
I have a question.
So I think the two conversations are, do we want to do this with a nominal amount? Or do we want to do this with the amount that we could need?
Do we have to make this decision to set this up? Or can we vote to set it up and send it in the article and then make the funding decision later?
I-
The articles, the articles are due on Tuesday.
Right. But does the funding have to be part of that?
Yes.
I think so. Yeah. And then if you want to change it, you can only change it by 10% or something.
Okay.
So to, to Chris's point, if we say we open it and add $250,000, we don't, we don't have that money in our budget. It's not ours. So we're not doing jeopardizing any of our asks. It's sitting in that account for if we need it. We don't, the school is not having that money.
But it's going, but if it passes a town meeting, it's going to, we're gonna, we're gonna run into the same problem at getting to the levy that is the whole reason why everyone's being asked to cut back their budget. I don't, I, I don't know how you can do that in good conscience and put us over the levy. Because it's tax money, right? We will, we will have to pay for it.
But we're gonna pay for it either way, right? Because either way, we're paying for this. Like the special ed, if, if this money, if we have $0 in our circuit breaker, if this money goes to fund, and it can only fund these out-of-district placements, correct? Or special needs in general, then... Either way, we're paying for it one way or another. So we're either paying for it now or paying for it later. But it's, we're, we are not gonna have a choice in spending the money for the students who need it. Like this isn't something we're ever gonna have a choice in, right?
There are two things that we need to note the answer to. One is, is that the question that was just asked, it's special, if we don't do this now, we end up having to do a special appropriation. Is that, will that hit a, can that knock us over the levy? Like, and what is the process? Do we have to have a fall town meeting to do that? That's what I thought.
I have no idea how to do that.
Right. So some, we need to, we need the answer to that question. Then we also need the answer to the question of, if there are nine students out there that could cause us to have to have, spend that money, how certain are we? What, what, what certainty do we have about whether those students are actually going to cause us to have to spend money? What's the certainty?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's unclear, really.
I mean, we had a conversation about this on Monday. We just don't.
We don't know.
We don't know. I mean, it's exactly the same thing that happened last year in the budget, right? Is there were these people, kids that we thought maybe, and we didn't end up being able to fund special education like we wanted to, and we've gone way over this year because a bunch of those kids came in. But I don't know. I just, I have a really hard time with asking for $250,000 when we know that we're so close to the levy limit and the town's financial health is, I, I don't know. I have a problem.
I mean, it's kind of, we're in a lose-lose situation. That's basically what I was trying, I guess what I was trying to say. It's like, this is money we're gonna have to spend, right?
We're not even-
But we don't know.
Yeah, but we talked about COVID, so.
Right.
Right. So that's the thing. So that, that's why I'm an advocate of just spending it, of funding it with a nominal amount. But, that's me.
Right. And I was saying-
A conservative one.
How close are we to the levy limit?
Though, I don't know. It was, they probably know. It was in their memo.
I don't know what the exact number is. I know the firefighter has settled.
No, 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 levy limit.
Right. The firefighters settled, so above what they had been reserving for. So it's trimmed the number we knew. But you're close.
Yeah.
So that means like, over X?
If we pass the levy limit, I don't think the town's prepared for that.
I heard like getting, like, year to-
We're also waiting till February for the company insurance premium enforcement for next year.
Right.
So I don't think we can do this. All right. So I think we should vote for the account?
And put a nominal amount.
15,000? Is that nominal?
I don't, I don't care what the amount, I don't, 15, 10, 25, none of those. I don't, I think it's good.
I'm fine with that. It's hard for everyone to decide on the table.
I'm fine.
Again, I'm having trouble reading, right?
I'm thinking.
Okay.
Like if we're not gonna fund it with like real numbers, then it goes-
I guess I just don't understand, if we're really talking about potentially going over the budget by like $350,000, it doesn't mean anything if we make this fund with nothing in it.
We're just trying to set it up.
We're just trying to set it up so we're able to fund it.
I get it.
Yeah.
But they're just asking us to set it up, so it's there.
No, whatever. 15's good.
Okay.
But are we gonna be in this situation again next year? And it's always gonna be like this joke of an account?
Exactly. Yes.
Like honestly, like, it's always just gonna be like, oh, we can't ask for that. And then this account's gonna be sitting there and it's gonna be useless.
Well, next year, we won't have, well, ooh.
I think the presentation to us the other night from special ed was that we're trying to right the ship. Sorry, I see Tom nodding, right? So ideally, in a year or two, we will have money to put into this fund.
Yeah. Depending on what comes or what. I mean, you never-
I, I mean, I know, but I mean, you're never gonna know, right? So we'll just have to process it.
Okay.
Okay, someone make a motion.
Let's see. I move to establish this, or do I move to the final?
Oh, yeah, we need two motions. One to establish the special education stabilization fund.
Okay. So I move to establish the special education stabilization fund.
Okay, I'll second it.
All those in favor? I, all those opposed? No one's opposed. Motion passes.
And the second motion for the funding? What did we decide on?
Well, no, the, the, I think the second motion is to approve, to submit the article as discussed, which includes the fund.
Okay. I move to submit the article to, for the special education stabilization fund as discussed.
Is there a second?
I have a question. And the $15,000, right?
Well, that's why I didn't know.
Well, isn't that, that's part of it.
It's gonna be part of the FY24 budget, operating budget? No?
No, we didn't.
Separate. That's why you're doing a warranty.
Oh, so it's gonna be separately appropriated by town meeting? Okay.
All right. So I'll second Jess's motion.
Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? No one's opposed. Motion passes.
Okay, great. So I'll work with Tom and Dr. Easy to get the final version in.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. We can move on to the next item. Discussion possible approval of FY23 superintendent goals.
Well, he walked out, so perhaps we can do like the consent agenda or something.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
Before I second it, I have one thing. Sorry. And I sent Diane that I just was wondering if we could add one sentence to the minutes. I can tell you what it is because I actually wrote it. So hold on one second. Under the part where we talked about special ed, the paragraph, and it says the FY23 approved special education budget was in the amount of, you know, $3 million, blah, blah, blah. I wanted to add, however, the number has been exceeded in FY23. And then go in, it is projected that these same services, well, I don't know, because I'm not looking at the minutes.
Oh, the fiscal year, it's in the middle of page two. Fiscal year '23 approved special education budget was in the amount of 3.618949.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add, however, this number has been exceeded in FY23. And then say it's projected that these same services will cost that.
Gotcha.
That's my amendment.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the amendment to the minutes that Jeannie Downs has presented to us.
It's a formal.
Second, you will?
Second.
Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Okay. Matters, any matters not anticipated? No matters not anticipated? Okay. So we just need to do the goals before we go into executive session.
Are there cookies?
They're kinda good.
There's snowmen.
Too much sugar.
There's a sky.
I think I've got my salad. Jess was ready.
I was just looking at the-
Absolutely. All set, buddy. You can hit the whole thing.
And how?
So was the settlement what?
So that's where I wonder if we made ourselves into a giant blackmailer.
That's why I didn't want to say the word lawyer, but, um-
I think-
Chris, you want to speak?
Sure. Just, this is delicious. Thank you so much.
Anybody want a salad?
Thanks, Perry. Absolutely.
Diane, would you like a salad?
I'm done with waffles.
Very good.
Yummy.
Diane, you know what? I still have Holly on the meet sign up to you every time I go. No, no, and I go, oh, no, she's not coming. Make action to delete her.
I, I still don't understand why she just like-
Does she have friends on her?
Yeah, there are some girls she knows that do it. And, and the twins do it.
Yes, they do.
We didn't have a real raisin.
I need that.
Okay. So, on the goals, where are we?
Um, superintendent goals. Okay. So I think at the last meeting, we left it that, um, Ellen had a couple thoughts that she was gonna put together and talked about for easy, which has happened, and the superintendent evaluation subcommittee has subsequently met. And I believe in the drive, you have led it to the drive, right, Dr. Easy?
Yes, it is. Yeah. The last item on the bottom.
The last, oh, yeah. Mine's on the top. But are the revised goals, and you'll see there's some wording that what's highlighted under goal three was added. Ellen, did you want to speak to me?
Everything else is the same since our last meeting?
Uh huh. Ellen, do you want to speak to yours?
Um, Jeannie and I and Dr. Easy met, and the original suggestions that I had were, let's put it this way, significantly more words than what remains in yellow here. I guess they were discussed by the superintendent evaluation subcommittee, and they are part of that record. And so my view of this is that in the interest of collaboration and compromise, I am going to vote yes on this revised. But I still, still feel pretty strongly that, I mean, when I said at the previous, the previous school committee meeting was on December 14th, was that I think we have a real issue of polarization in this district. Now, I think that's kind of an understatement. And I, I think that it's really important to work on that in the coming year for every leader in our district. So I'm good with this because it includes the word, well, first of all, I like the idea of it including the double years. I meant, we talked about that with Dr. Easy. And it includes respect, and I'm going to assume it applies to all of members of both those leadership teams. And so hopefully, if those folks can achieve this, then it will trickle down to the rest of the community, which was what I was really talking about, so.
I think you're missing the word school year.
During the, oh, yeah.
School years. Yes, excellent.
Dr. Easy, did you hear that? Because you're the one who has the edit thing.
I do.
So add school years after '23 and '24.
Okay. Yep.
So, and I just, I guess I should say, since I wasn't in the subcommittee meeting, because we didn't want to create a quorum of the school committee in the subcommittee meeting, Dr. Easy, you are comfortable with this iteration of the goals?
Yeah, I am comfortable with it.
That was weird. I can't look at my documents.
It's like it's stuck.
Yeah.
You should reboot.
I don't know if I just press the clip.
Turn it off, and then turn it back on.
Okay, so, yeah.
Question. It looks like the benchmarks changed.
Really?
Where?
Or I'm remembering this differently, which is very possible. But number two looks different to me.
Under goal three?
Goal three benchmarks two, evidence and feedback of activities and surveys. Sorry.
Okay. My five-year-old paper probably-
Added, and we've looked at it a few times, so I'm not sure.
I printed this from the, um, I think that's the same as we saw last time on December 14th. Because Dr. Easy added the word feedback, or I think, or something before December 14th, right?
I don't remember. It's been so many.
Well, I only know because I wrote the minutes for December 14th today. So, and that was in the minutes, I think. He did add something, but I think there, I think it's the same as you saw on December 14th.
Question, do you want to add something different?
Yeah.
Or change something? Right.
I, I don't want to cause more consternation or anything. I just, um, it just seems very generic, like activities and surveys of, oh.
So probably what's not written here, Jess and I were talking about this actually. So a lot of when we were meeting several times to do this, Dr. Easy would show us some of the activities he does with admin council. And the one I can think of is the hourglass one. It has a bunch of different words and people pick who they identify with. So I think that's what that means by activities. And then you do surveys with them too, right? So I think, and perhaps because we heard it, it, this makes sense to us. If you think it needs another descriptor, suggest away.
So?
But it's stuff he does in the admin council.
Sorry, I'm both eating and just thinking. So would it make sense to say, um, evidence and feedback of the administrative council activities and surveys?
I think, should it be from rather than from?
Sure.
And is that what it means?
I don't know. I think it's evidence of doing them. But Doc, maybe Dr. Easy could clarify for us.
Wait, what are we, I'm sorry.
So on the second benchmark under goal three, evidence and feedback of activities and surveys, Erin's just wondering if it, if we put evidence and feedback of administrative council activities and surveys, if that's what it's meant to be.
Yeah, I'm asking because to me, all I thought of was the WU- Yeah, I'm asking because to me, all I thought of was the WTA survey, so...
And I was saying that...
I, no, no, so I want to, I was thinking we should flush that out.
Just be more specific.
Is that the goal standard of surveys?
No.
No, so we can do leadership activity.
This section talks about admin council though, right?
I'm thinking in benchmark two.
I understand. I'm saying, is it our activities and surveys around the superintendent or is it evidence and feedback from his activities with the administrative council?
So can you put a clarifying one in there?
I would just, I just add leadership activities and surveys.
Okay, does, does that work?
So it's going to say evidence and feedback of leadership activities and surveys?
Yeah, so does that work better or no?
Is it measurable for us when we sit down to do his evaluation, is the question?
Activities, yes.
I think if it's, I think if it's related to both leadership teams, it should apply to both leadership teams, right?
Yeah, so evidence and feedback of leadership activities and surveys. And that's measurable because we'll see the activities.
And the surveys.
And the surveys is, yeah. Okay. So did you add that word, Dr. Easy?
Leadership, yep.
All right, anything else? Okay, then perhaps we can entertain a motion to approve them as amended, whereas...
Okay. Do I want to do a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I move to approve the superintendent FY23 goals as discussed and amended.
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? No one's opposed, everyone's in favor, motion passes. Okay.
Goals and standards. I'm just amending that because the standards are below two.
Oh, okay.
So the motion is to approve the goals and standards as discussed and amended. Okay, great.
Are you keeping these little?
Okay, that's what I asked. So I'll, we can go into an executive session at this point. So I move to enter executive session for the purposes of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Wheel and Teachers Association as permitted by MGL Chapter 30A, Section 2183, as a discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the school committee, and approving executive session minutes as permitted by MGL Chapter 30A, Section 22, December 14th, 2022. The school committee will be joined by Dr. Omar Easy, superintendent, Perry Graham, assistant superintendent, and Diane Marabella, recording secretary. The school committee will adjourn an executive session and will not reconvene in open session. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, do a roll call vote. Erin?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jeannie?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Chris, yes. Penny?